Hey, so how are you? Have you seen so long? It's been a while. I'm really interested in your side.
Are you?
Yes. I've been twenty years only my twenty first.
Yeah. How much? Yeah.
Uh...
Is it working?
Well, I was with the Mexican. That's great.
I did just in the past. You were first.
I was working for a lawyer, Cliff Granger. Bankruptcy. Yeah. Yeah, I did that. I worked as a bankruptcy lawyer. And, uh, you know, get bankruptcy schedules and stuff like that. Uh, I still work for him on his bill. I've retired from that. I am so ready. And you?
I'm still at it. Still at it. You know, uh, I haven't put the grid on. I'm still working.
Well, I'm, I'd be seventy eight in September, so it's time, don't you think?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think that, I think that it keeps you working, to be working. Keeps your mind sharper.
Sure.
But I'm ready to retire. If my mind's not as sharp, what? I'm just glad to live with it. I won't remember anything, so it won't matter.
What you don't know, it won't hurt.
That's right. Yeah, I can't remember.
Hey, so?
How are you?
I'm ready to play golf. Only at these teams. We're gonna take in the mayor's brother and bring him onto our team. And we're all open to, we're open to side tracks that would benefit the kids. So, um... I'm gonna say, you know, someone wants to see one of my people.
Oh, because you can't see people?
Well, I don't want to see me anyway.
So you got the first one?
Scholarships. Two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight. They have reached over a hundred ninety-five thousand.
So basically, we have thirty-seven scholarships.
So you're our city manager tonight?
I am the city manager.
Oh, wow. All right.
All right. Don't give me a guitar.
So what they do is...
I will not say word. That's a big guarantee. Should be a very long meeting, I think. I think it's not like the ones we've been having lately. Yeah.
So, then everything is set.
Oh, yes. I can see. No.
I just never see.
What is that?
So what do you do with them?
We do, uh...
Good.
You give them the history because you still give them stats.
Okay. I mean, we had a fine ass.
Looks nice. I'll get a close up for you. How are you? Looks bigger than last year. Come on. Such a cute.
You brought my lunch?
Yeah. Popcorn, grapes, and just... A combo, right? Thank you.
This is... Are we first?
For presentation. Let's go through roll call and go through the agenda.
Right.
Number nine.
Is anybody excuse?
Salute to the Mexico flag, put that back. It's not the flag of the agents?
Leroy, can you come down here real quick? Thanks.
Nice to see you.
I thought you, yeah, I saw you. I gotta call you. Busy, busy.
You guys?
Yeah, thanks. All right. Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, the salute to the flag and the invocation. If Counselor Harris, Counselor Villarreal, and Counselor Ives can lead us accordingly.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the flag of the state of Mexico and the physical, perfect friendship amongst American cultures.
Might simply ask everybody to bow your heads as we gather. We ask, as always, that this body make informed decisions based upon all the information presented to us, that our actions be reasonable, prudent, and in the best interests of the people of Santa Fe, and that all who come within this chamber, as well as all who participate in the making of policy and discussion of these issues throughout our city, deal with the issues with civility, with respect for other positions or positions, not their own, and that we always understand that it is better to be able to disagree agreeably than to engage in shouting, or name-calling, or other things that do not contribute to the resolution of issues, but rather to the deconstruction of civil discourse. Is there anybody for whom we should pray this evening?
Just ask that we keep in prayer Counselor Joseph Maestas, who lost his brother Ben suddenly over the, um, the weekend. And I know that Celeste has provided the council, I believe, with, um, the information regarding Ben's services. And we just pray for Counselor Maestas and his family, and the family of Ben Maestas, who was taken far, far too early in life.
If we could then have a few moments of silence before we begin. Amen.
Okay, let's go to move on to roll call.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Counselor Dominguez. Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Here.
Counselor Lindell.
I believe she's present.
She is here.
Counselor Maestas.
He's excused.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera. Also excuse.
Excused.
Thank you. Counselor Trujillo.
Here.
Counselor Villarreal.
Present.
Thank you. You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Martinez, are there any changes at this time?
Mayor, we have none.
Any changes by the council? If not, what's the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to remove at this time? Counselor Villarreal.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see. Aye for discussion and clarification, and add me as a co-sponsor to P as in Paul, and a co-sponsor to T as in Tom.
Counselor Ives.
Nothing to pull, but just to note that I had previously joined as a co-sponsor of item P, so would ask to be added. Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to ask if we could remove item J. J as in Javier. Anything else?
Right.
Any other requests to move? Counselor Dominguez.
Mayor, if you can add me on to item T. T as in Tom.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve as amended.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Counselor Dominguez. Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell. Counselor Trujillo.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal. Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Moving on to item eight, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of July twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Moving on to presentations, I'd like to ask the council if they would allow me a point of privilege. We did not get this advertised, but we did want to make sure that... It was advertised, actually, for Public Works. I asked Counselor Ives if he wouldn't mind if we moved the presentation that was going to be made to Public Works to the city councils so that we could properly thank the Four Kids effort and recognize city staff at the Marty Sanchez Golf Course, who work with our former city councilor Pesol Chavez annually, and Counselor Molly Widded, to put on an event that raises money for Santa Fe's children. And I'd like to, if possible, ask Counselor Chavez and Counselor Widded if you wouldn't mind coming forward and making the presentation to the council and anything else you'd like to add. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving us this privilege. I know it's usually done at a different forum. But for nineteen years, we've been coming here. And it's somewhat of an anomaly in that three months ago, I guess you guys were going through budget hearings and stuff. And everybody at this podium, I actually happened to see it on TV, and I was looking at it, and everybody that came up to the podium was asking you for money. For nineteen years, we've been coming here and giving you money. And we've been giving money to your children, and I say your children because each one of you represents districts in Santa Fe in which, mind you, thirty-five thousand scholarships have been given to the children of Santa Fe and those families that you represent, and you should be very, very proud of that. And over, close to two hundred thousand, I think, dollars have been raised in order to do that. And to show you what impact it has, in just a minute, you're going to be presented with a check by a person who benefits by all this and their family. Elijah Salazar, ten-year-old young man who will probably be a professional golfer because my understanding is he has an eight handicap. And he probably hits from the tips, I would guess. So if that means anything, he's, he hits like a pro. I don't know if he does that or not, but he is very, very good. And his father, Justin Salazar, would like to thank you as well. I just want to take a few minutes and tell you about the history of this because without the governing body, this could never happen. Nineteen years ago, we established the Four Kids Golf Tournament. It was done in resolution. It's still active, I believe. And in that, we decided that we wanted to go out to the small business community and collaborate with them. And instead of coming to, again, coming to the governing body and asking for money, we wanted to give money back to our community. And over the nineteen years, there have been some lean times. But I must say that we have some very good small business people in this town that dug deep, deep, deep during those lean years just to continue this program and to make sure that our kids had the opportunities to go and physically be active, whether it's playing golf and/or at the Henneveva Chavez Community Center where they can swim, ice skate, and obviously, you, you know that facility. So they get to do all those things. It's, again, it's about, and I know this governing body is very much into our children. And I appreciate that. And I think we all want to get them up off of the couch and out into the community, out doing exercise and everything, and saving that screen time for another time period. So in nineteen years, we've done this. The business community has come together, has brought forth the monies, the two hundred thousand dollars. Again, we are here to give you that money. And we will continue to do so as long as we can. Many of you have played in this tournament. Carmichael has been there all the time. Sig has been there. The mayor's going to be there this time. Joe's been there. I think, Ron, you've been there before, yeah. And, and let me just kind of tell you about it. We serve a lot of food. In northern New Mexico, I was thinking about it the other day. And, and I think the mayor can attest to this, that in northern New Mexico, the first time a person would come into your house, it was, it was, "Here, sit down and eat. Sit down and eat." It could be two o'clock in the afternoon, nine, what, you may have just eaten, but, "Here, sit down and eat." Well, that's kind of what this tournament's about as well. Come and eat. I'll tell you how it starts. Coffee, donuts in the morning, okay? Right after you tee off at hole number three or four, which is it? We have chili dogs out there on the course for you to go ahead and eat. So as you make the turn, as you make the turn, and you come into the clubhouse, they're making hamburgers, green chili tortilla burgers, brockwurst, ice cream. They're going to be making some sort of ice cream over there. So it's kind of that atmosphere. It's kind of that atmosphere. And I've noticed in the nineteen years, and maybe Carmichael, you can, you can help me out on this, but we've had people come in from out of state. And they said, "Hey, we're just visiting, but we thought we'd go ahead and join." And they are so welcomed by everyone. And after the tournament, they go, "Wow, so this is what Santa Fe's about. This is what Santa Fe's about." So it has, it's not only a golf tournament in a sense, there's just a golf tournament. It's more than that. It's about familia. It's about children. It's about food. It's about eat. It's about our culture. It's about who we are. So, um, you know, again, like I said, we've had thousands and thousands of scholarships that we've given. We want you folks to come. The mayor has committed to being there. He has a challenge going on, I guess. And I know Sig is going to be offering a challenge, throwing down the gauntlet there for, for, for others to follow.
I just don't know that I've got Elijah on my team.
Smart decision.
Sand banging it right away. So, uh, we want to thank you, and Molly's got some statistics that she wants to share with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chavez.
He kind of covered it all, but I'm going to give you the hard summons, the hard numbers, you know? We're very, very proud. Altogether, in the nineteen years that we have been doing this, we've raised a hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars in money, actual cash. And every bit of that has gone to the ASO, the GCC, and MSL in scholarships. And we have funded thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-seven scholarships. And at this time, we would like to present the check from last year. We did have an increase because, like Pesol said, we've had some lean times at this. And this is our eight handicap golfer here. I mean, he could give my husband a run for his money here, so here we go. And I just would like to reiterate, we'd sure like to see all of you come up there and play with us and enjoy the festivities and just see the camaraderie. and play with us and enjoy the festivities and just see the camaraderie, how we do bring this community together. And it is heartwarming, and it is the best cause that we can think of, is doing something for our kids to keep them healthy and involved in our community. And thank you so much for allowing us to do this this evening, very much.
Thank you.
Just one more comment, if I may. Just to let you know, because I know you folks are fiscally responsible, I want to let you know that we're fiscally responsible. So think of it this way. You plop down $100 to play with all the goodies that I talked about and stuff, and nobody comes away from that tournament without some sort of prize. I guarantee that. You plop down $100, $98 of your $100 goes directly to that kid and his colleagues.
Right.
That's pretty much unheard of in any 501(c)(3) corporation or any corporation at all. So understand that. We're lean and mean when it comes to that. So just wanted to mention that. I'm going to ask this young man to come up and say a few words. I don't know if you can. I'm pretty small, but here.
Hey, Elijah, how are you? Welcome. Wow. In the presence of an eight handicapper. That's amazing.
I was talking to him about how it is with honesty in golf, and I wanted him to explain to you what his honesty in golf is.
So the honesty in golf, like, I always see these guys over at the country club, they're playing from the golf, and they say they shot like a 73 or like a 72 or 69, when they really just hit seven shots on really each hole. And also, another thing is, when I play in tournaments, I, we do is, we look back. And what we do is, we look at our scores to see if all of ours are the same, or we might have had mistakes. Sometimes it kind of gets mixed up with each another. Like, this other kid I play with, he has a five, and I have, like, we tied the hole, but on their card, mine's a four, and he's a five. So you have to be honest with it and say, "I got a five on that hole, too."
Nice. Yeah. So no erasers are allowed in the cart, right? On the pencil?
Sometimes, like over at Sandia and over at Los Altos, there's an eraser. But where in Santa Fe, there's not really any erasers on them.
Love it. Nice. That's honesty. Good job. Well, Elijah, I want to thank you for coming here tonight and speaking to the council. It speaks a lot about you as a 10-year-old, not only that you have already been an accomplished golfer, but that you're willing to come and communicate. And I think the important thing for you to know is that you're also a leader. And other kids can look to what you're doing, see your success, know that if they choose to be out in our recreation facilities or out golfing, they can have the same experience you have. So keep it up and know that your city is very proud of you, and we're going to cheer you on as you continue to excel in golf. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chavez and Counselor Widded. Of course, I do just want to briefly say before I offer up to the council four comments, certainly on behalf of the city, thank you for the enormous generosity, the time and effort, the personal resources. Counselor Chavez, I know that you dropped $50 in certain bags out there on the golf carts, so hopefully that finds its way somewhere near the mayor's cart. I'm not sure. But you just create some fun for people to really enjoy themselves, to bring the community together. And what I love about this presentation, and we said it a couple of weeks ago at another approval by the council, is that this is an example of Santa Feans standing up for Santa Feans. And we have to celebrate that every chance we get. And the fact that you're pulling this community together to raise money, that's going to go directly into assuring access to every child in Santa Fe to our recreational facilities so that they can thrive is a very, very big deal and very transformative for many of our kids. And for that, we just don't get to thank you enough, but certainly know that we're all very thankful for yourself and Counselor Widded. And of course, to the incredible staff, Jennifer and Henry, you know, this only gets put on if you have a staff that's willing to work on it daily and put your heart and soul into it. So thank you guys both for what you do. And please extend our thanks and our gratitude to all the Marty Sanchez staff for what they're doing to make this a successful event for everybody. All right, council? Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So Counselor Chavez and Counselor Widded, we won't talk about integrity on the golf course right now. And I won't tell you about whether or not I've gotten better over the 11 or 12 years that I've gone to this tournament. But I've been going to this tournament for about 11 or 12 years now. And it's, I've gone to other tournaments, and this is always the funnest one. It's relaxing. The atmosphere is good. The people are good. And I have to commend you for being able to do what you've done during those lean times, because I remember in 2008, 2009, 2010, when the economy was bad, you know, you didn't see as many golf carts as you used to, and certainly not as many as you see now. So thank you for persevering over those economic times and keeping your focus and making sure that you did what you could for the children of this community. It's, I would encourage everyone to go. It's good food, great times, good people. And so I want to thank both of you for all the work that you've done over all these years. I want to make sure to thank city staff for all the work that they do as well in getting that course ready, and all the volunteers that go to serve burgers and peel the green chili, some good green chili, by the way. And of course, the young people like Elijah who have taken advantage of what the business community and others have given via this tournament. I think that sometimes we forget that our young people, even though they don't get to the poll necessarily, they're not old enough to vote, they are constituents of ours. And so it's good to see, in this case, the business community and golfers getting out there to do what they can for our young people. So thank you very much. And congratulations to you as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Lindell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for doing this tournament every year. It's tremendous fun. I have a great time out there every year. Staff loves participating in this. It's great fun for everybody. And, you know, Mayor, I'm not really sure why your brother decided to play on my team.
He's a cheater.
But I can guarantee you that it's a day I look forward to. And the food is terrific. I mean, you go around that course, and it's like, oh, my gosh, there's another food stand here. And so thank you very, very much for continuing to do this. It's a big deal to all of us, and it is one of the most fun tournaments of the year. Very, very fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Trujillo.
Thank you, Mayor. No, counselors, as Vin said, thank you guys for what you guys do. I mean, you know, as Carmichael said, you know, I've been there. You guys put on a hell of a tournament, and I'm definitely going to be there this year. I see that mulligans are three for $10, so I'm going to probably purchase a lot of them. But I look forward to it, and as well with staff. Thank you guys for what you guys do at the golf course as well, keeping it ready for this tournament. So take care.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you very much, not to repeat what all has been said before. And just to say that I'm motivated, take up the sport. And so I've never been a golfer. I think that I will show up for the dance next year, and I appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Elijah, go out there, have some fun, and thank you for what you're doing. Who wins, you or your dad, on the golf course? Who's a better golfer? Nice. I think we all knew that answer, so way to go. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. I had requested... Actually, Counselor Villarreal, Item A.
Thank you, Mayor. So I asked most of my questions in committee, and I feel conflicted with this, only because I'm, I guess I'm wanting to be reassured that the money that was taken from the River Trail project could not be used for any related projects or improvements on the river trail. And that's why we were able to move this money over to this particular project.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, all of the Phase A River Trail projects in the city's adopted bikeways master plan have been completed. And those funds were funded out of a business unit that was created in the 2014, 2012 bond sale, but the latest bond sale. This particular fund is an older business unit from the 2008. It dates back to 2004. And so our projects with respect to the River Trail are complete. And it's not to say that there are never future needs. I mean, it's dynamic environment, et cetera. But all of our identified master plan projects are complete, with the exception of one that was on the master plan that was going to take a trail under the bridges at Guadalupe, Sandoval, Tudongasbad. And so that particular project is sort of one that needs to be reassessed in the master plan. I'm not so sure that it's going to be one that would rise to the occasion of being a Phase A project. It's very complicated, very costly, et cetera. So it's, that's the only one that if you went through the master plan, is not complete. So I hope that gives you assurance.
So let me ask you this, Leroy. I guess I'm thinking about some of the bridge needs on the River Trail and how we haven't been able to have funding fix those holes. We have temporary coverage on the holes on the bridge. So is this money, I know there's always pockets of money we think could be used for one thing, but they can't. They're very specific. Is this funding source that we're transferring over, is it specific to landscaping needs and it couldn't be used for bridge improvements? Like, the one I'm thinking of is at Alto Park, where we have major holes on the bridge crossing, and that is part of the River Trail. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, that particular bridge project was done with bond funds back in about 2000, when the River Trail was connected from St. Francis almost to Camino Alida, or maybe to Camino Alida. Typically, bond funds are not used for maintenance. And so once bridges are built and constructed, they do enter, and are operated and maintained by the Parks Department. And so those issues are identified and highlighted. And I understand from communications from Parks at BTAC that those issues are going to be resolved with proper maintenance funds. But typically, we don't spend new bond money on a maintenance project.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I think it's hard for people to wrap their head around a budget when they see amounts of money that are supposed to go for vegetation. But I think what wasn't clear is, in that budget, it was for the actual work and labor, and then also watering for the full year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what those numbers were showing, and I think that's confusing. I think it's hard for us to kind of decipher a budget that is piecemealed out, but we don't really know the full cost of the actual project. Not the full cost, but the, there's tree costs, but there's also the implementation, the actual labor part of it that wasn't factored in. And you clarified that for us. So I understand that piece. And I guess, I'm trying to think of this as a bigger project of a transportation route that we haven't been able to fulfill. And here's our chance, as well as linking parts of the community that really do need that thoroughfare. So, and then the other piece is, I have complete confidence in San Isidro Permaculture, because I've seen their work in town. It's excellent. They are probably the top in trying to look at erosion controls and stormwater drainage management. So I feel confident that they will put together a system that's water efficient. What I'm worried about, though, is when it becomes staff maintenance issue, then how do we make sure or ensure that our staff can figure out how to maintain it at a low cost and really looking at the design and what its intention was? And I know this won't be your department, so I don't know how you can speak for others, but I just need assurance there, because we have projects that are wonderful. But then when it comes to the maintenance part, I don't know what to say about that, because we have so many parks to maintain, and this is going to be one other. So do you have anything to share with us about that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Villarreal, the design intention of the landscaping was that it would be drought tolerant, native material, and so something that eventually would be conducive to surviving and thriving in our climate. So, you know, that is one help. The city is in the process of undertaking a stormwater management plan citywide that will involve the Parks Department and these questions of operations, maintenance, et cetera, with respect to stormwater. And looking at it as a resource is another element of support of the long-term use of this particular model. It's also connected and contiguous with the rail yard park, which we have a specific Parks crew allocated to that would probably, you know, make its way over just one block across Aleread, in addition to, I hate to name specifics, but nonprofit volunteers that get involved. So there's, there are really positive, it's in the right spot at the right time that I could foresee us, you know, hopefully giving you and the community assurances that, and also, it's the most prominent intersection in town, so we'll see what's going on.
Do you see, then, volunteers from the rail yard corp, or they call themselves something different?
Rail yard stewards.
The stewards being part of the process and solution to future maintenance or future
Well, I know that the Conservation Easement with the Trust for Public Land holds is part of this area. And that's another nonprofit partner that's been very active with the city in public-private partnerships. But I think city staff itself and the Parks Department often is underrated in its efforts. And I'm fully confident in city staff to manage, I don't know what the area is, maybe it's .25 acres of land that's drought tolerant, native plants with a really good design. So I would start with the basis of city staff, and my confidence with Richard Thompson and his crews is high.
Well, I agree with you about having confidence in staff to be able to do this. I just want to make sure that cross-training happens and understanding of systems and stormwater management, because I think there'll be a different kind of maintenance plan for this, very different from our other parks. And I just want to make sure and ensure that we have that communication, because I think that's where we break down at the city, is communication between different departments. So, thank you. No further questions.
Counselor Lindell, and then Counselor Ives.
Thank you. Good evening. My concern about this, and I expressed it at finance, I mean, we're talking about fairly small trees here. A large number of them, they need to be hand-watered. I know there's a plan with it. But between the time, I mean, I went on a walk around with some of the Parks crew looking at trees. And I just think that it would be reasonable if we're starting a park that's got a number of trees in it, and it's planned out and it's landscaped, that someone talks to Parks about it before we go ahead and approve a new, another park for them to maintain. No one asked for their input on it. No one has talked to them about what the maintenance of this park means to them, or at least on the level of folks that I was talking to. And they feel a little put upon that there's no input from the guy with the boots on the ground that's going to be responsible for this, that if these trees don't make it, that the finger always gets pointed at them. And it's really not fair. I think that they have a busy schedule now, and I realize this is not a large parcel of land, but we're talking about a lot of plantings on this. And I don't know why we would not have, I understand that we have a plan with water sustainability with it, but I worry about projects that we do that don't have any irrigation. Even projects that we do that have irrigation... I mean, we lost a lot of trees in Frenchy's Field this year, over the last few years. You know, I'm not going to try to not have this be passed, but I'm going to be bitterly disappointed if three or four years from now, these plants are not thriving. Bitterly disappointed about it. And I, I've had people say to me, oh, it's $100,000 on a 400,000, or a $4 million project. I understand the numbers, but it doesn't, that's not what we're debating about or what we're talking about. It's getting this project done. It is a major intersection. It needs to look nice, but I'm very worried about it once it's not being hand watered after the first year. So those are my concerns about this. Thank you.
Counselor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly agree with the concept that we should be talking with all departments who are going to be touching upon projects when they are accomplished. And I know we have our Public Works Director up in the back there who's diligently taking notes and nodding his head. So perhaps as we bring new projects forward, we can make sure that we are collaborating on the front side, on the backside, so to speak, so that Parks is part of that discussion. And I certainly think we'll have the capacity at Public Works to take up the issue of, that issue generally, to try and make sure and ensure that those plantings do succeed. I wanted to say I am very pleased with the direction that this project has gone in terms of utilizing green infrastructure, using plants appropriate to our climate, and really trying to make intelligent use of stormwater. So those are all aspects I hope that we will see in every project that comes forward through Public Works because that's leveraging, leveraging our environment to serve best the people of Santa Fe. So I applaud you there. The one thing I would pass on is simply one criticism from one good friend in the community, and it wasn't even about this space, but noting that there are other spots in the city where we have not taken as good care of certain trees as we otherwise might have and which have as a result died. So I think that is an issue that hopefully we can take up with Parks, if Parks is responsible, and look at how we can do a better job in that regard. So thank you for this. I would move to approve. Not meaning to cut off debate, but.
Yeah, we need more debate, but there was a motion. Is there a second? Okay, Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just ask you, Leroy, is this, how time sensitive is this? And, and let me say why. Because both Councillors Lindell and Villarreal bring up a good point. The, the discussion that you've had, I certainly have had with staff in the past and when we created the rules for medians and the idea that we make medians as maintenance free as possible. And so that's really kind of what I'm hearing is that from your perspective, you know, they're drought tolerant plants and, you know, there's some irrigation stuff in there that allows us to use rainfall to take advantage of that. But the maintenance part is still something that is, it's, it's an issue. I mean, it's just be honest about it, it's an issue. Our staff does a very good job. They're out there every day, you know, responding to constituents because they read something in the paper and, you know, they want something done or they just want to have their tax dollars used wisely. Parks isn't here right now. And so I, we, we did have them at finance, though, I believe. I can't remember. But, you know, you want, do you want to speak on behalf of Parks? Do you? You do?
Well, I could. I mean, I could, I will, the only thing I'd like to make sure that, that the governing body and citizens understand is that we, Parks has been actively involved throughout the design process. It's been a long project. I mean, I think it goes back at least 10 years, so.
So Parks, when you say Parks?
I'm thinking Fabian Chavez, Ben Gurulev, Richard Thompson.
Previous administration, okay.
But it gives you the sense of the time that we have been thinking about and working with our design consulting team on this. So that this design is well thought out and deep within the city's bureaucracy. I don't know if, if particular Park crew members have been, but we've had active Parks Department review and comment and buy-in and conversations as recent as, previous to the finance meeting with Richard Thompson, who unfortunately isn't here because he's at his daughter's wedding. But I, I would hate for anyone to leave thinking that Parks has not been involved in the design and even construction process. That would be the one clarification.
I completely and absolutely respect that. And I've been around long enough to see where staff doesn't want to say no, right? At any level, they don't want to say no. But someone, the city manager, needs to be responsible for whether or not Park staff is saying no when they really can't. And so I guess maybe let me ask the city manager's office, if they've taken a good, close look at this and if they concur with their Park staff that, you know, they'll be able to maintain it and take care of it and do all those things that we obviously have concerns about.
Mayor, Counselor, so I haven't personally had a conversation and I'm not aware that, that Brian has. So I can't really say that that hasn't already happened. So.
So who do I go to?
You know, if, you know, if Leroy's telling, telling us that there's been some participation from Parks, you know, I don't have any reason not to, to trust that that has happened.
Well, you heard it, you heard it there, folks. You know, the city manager's office is basically giving their okay for this. And so if, you know, in two years from now, right, there, there's an issue, there's got to be some accountability for that. So that's really the only thing I wanted to make sure is that, that line of communication has indeed flown through the, through the course that, you know, it needs to go through. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Obviously, this is, you know, these are all active opportunities for us to make sure that not only there's a cross section of participation by all the departments, but in the end, from a, from a aesthetic and a maintenance standpoint, you know, the, the decisions that have been made at the administrative level are, are well thought out. And you certainly have satisfied, satisfied me that you've had those conversations with, with Parks. They've had input into the design. I think you've been front and center of many of the, not front and center, but you've been able to view the challenges that we've all had in trying to go through this deficit and making sure that we have investments that are able to come back in, that we do it right. So, so wish you the best of luck in this. Well, if, if this passes tonight and certainly, you know, I know that the staff does hear when the governing body expresses concerns over how things are moving forward. And we'll just look forward to continuous feedback and see how it's monitored. There's been a motion and a second. Can we move to roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up real quickly on a couple of items from Finance Committee and, and really read from the action sheet. Counselor Harris requested Leroy Pacheco emails Finance Committee members the amount allocated for the Asake Trail underpass in the capital budget. Now, really, when we, at Finance, you know, we talked about two issues. We talked about the, was it really a bid alternate amount? And so the, you've provided us a spreadsheet, which I think is important, that shows that the bid alternate increased 7.32%. The bid alternate was submitted on May of 2016. And so the fact that it went from, call it $97,000 to $104,000 doesn't, doesn't bother me now that it's represented accurately. That was the issue I had, as you know. And so that's been distributed. But what I really wanted to ask was, you know, you distributed, you and Ms. McDonald distributed really a pretty good total project budget and total project cost sheet. Did, did this document go out to the balance of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Harris, it did not.
Okay. Well, I think that it should at some point because this is the type of document that, you remember, you were just one of several project managers that I was discussing this approach, total project budgets, total project costs. And I applauded you for, for delivering this, you know, quite frankly, when you needed to. It really helped. So I think it's appropriate to circulate it, just even though it's after the fact potentially. I think it kind of helps to illustrate the type of documentation that I think is appropriate. And it also kind of clarifies, even for ourselves, you've heard it say this is a $4 million project. Well, no. It started off as a $5 million, $14,000 project. If this action is approved, it will become a $5 million to, call it $250,000 project. So we need to know our numbers. We need to know where the money's coming from. We need to know how it gets spent. And this type of documentation throughout all of our projects, all of our departments, in my opinion, is what needs to be done. And I've had, and continue to have conversations with Public Works as well as Finance on this. But anyways, that's what, that's really what I wanted to say. Please circulate this, just as a kind of representative. And we'll have further discussions because I think there's categories that I consider as part of a total project cost that are not necessarily here. But we don't need to go into that now. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Counselor Treehill. And then, do you have another question, Counselor Ives? Or, okay. Just a point. But Counselor Treehill.
No, Leroy, you know, my concern was with the cost of the trees, you know, you know, for what, for what I saw the prices being. You told me we're just going to get these little twigs. It's really, it's going to take 15, 20 years to grow. You know, for that price, I thought we'd be getting these enormous trees, you know, that were already, you know, technically, you know, at least four or five years old. You know, so that was my concern. I said, another thing that I just want to bring up with Parks and all that is I've been asking for years if there's a possibility maybe somewhere down the line, and this may come to you, Mayor, too, and Public Works. The city buying a spade, I don't know if you guys know what a spade is. You know, a spade, a spade, you know, can, can be attached to many different machinery. And it can actually dig up some of these trees, you know. And we have so many in, in some of our parks that we could actually relocate these trees to other sections. I'm giving you an example, is at Franklin Miles. Over the years, trees have just been put along the side of the fencing in the, along the big field. And they are so overcrowded, there's like five that are dead. You know, so I'm just, these are just ideas. And if we, you know, can find funding for it, I mean, you know, to me, we could go to different places, even on Sirius Road this past time when we had the construction going on. You know, I saw backhoes just slamming down fully grown trees. You know, we, we could have gone in there with a spade, dug them up, take them to Sidler, Sidler Road, may put a place there, save them. Then when it comes time that we have a project where we need a tree, we got one. I mean, you know, I'm just trying to look, look to the future and look to, and plus, cost savings for us. Instead of us paying this type of money, we could have these trees ready to go, no cost to the city, we already got them. So I mean, it's just the thought. And, but I've been asking for years if we possibly could buy a spade. So other than that, Leroy, I'm, I'm amazed that we finally got to this point after how many years waiting for this underpass. And it looks nice. I mean, I've actually seen it, you know, when I was over there by Starbucks, I actually took a look at it. I hope it works, I really do, you know. I, you, you know the concerns that people had with that. That's all, same here, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Treehill. All right, Counselor Ives, a quick point.
On the question about distribution of the financials that are in back of this project and with the creation of and enhancement of the project listing of all the city's project that Public Works has been working on, and I know that got circulated. I've talked with our Director of Public Works about trying to create some sort of site on the city's webpage where that project list could be uploaded. And information such as that in the piece that had been sent out, I think, just to you and I, perhaps, but, and that will come to the others, where all those would be linked in. Part of the challenge, too, is that all of that is done basically more or less by hand and then entered. And with the adoption of the new enterprise system, the capacity to generate those reports and populate those fields across all sorts of different platforms will be enhanced. And so that I think will be an underlying part of that new system, which again, will help to increase our transparency. But talking with Finance this morning about trying to use this type of form to ensure that we have all that information available. So we'll keep working on that and hopefully have an update in September on that.
Thank you. And then, obviously, I think the, the idea that Counselor Treehill brought up, the idea of looking into some of the machinery out there to, to be a part of our, our process, if that, if that does work, seems like it's a, a good opportunity, especially on new projects, if we can actually get mature trees from other parts of the city. So I'd be anxious to see how that, how that follow-up is. All right, roll call.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez? And Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is approved.
Thank you, Leroy. If you just hold on real quick, we're going to move on to item J. As the council knows, this is, this is an item that Counselor Miestus worked on extensively with our staff and, and the community on, on coming to a resolution that is supported by all parties on this cooperative services agreement. I know that Counselor Miestus spent a lot of time with Leroy and others to, to try and assure that, that there's a win-win scenario out there. There are, there are a few points, I think, that were agreed upon, Leroy, that didn't quite make it into the packet. And you and I had a chance to speak this afternoon regarding those points that you presented to me. Can you just, I think, as briefly as you can, identify those? Because I think what your, what your thought process is, which I support is to, if these points didn't make it into this contract, that, that the contract would be amended for the, prior to city manager's signature that would reflect some of the points that Counselor Miestus and the community were able to negotiate. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes. And if you don't have those before you, the win-win solution is in Janet Ahern's hands and she can pass them out. But it is.
Just go to pass them out real quick, Ms. Ahern, if you can. And we, you don't need necessarily, I just want the council to be able to look at it real quick and give an overview.
And so basically, it had to do with staying on the city-owned land on the east side of the Arroyo, I'm sorry, the east side of the reserve property, 100% city-owned land. The, the question was east or west. And so the city-owned land on the east side is, is all, everyone's agreed to that. And really, the, the scope of the contract under consideration and the costs are not affected. But this is, encapsulates what the terms were where we were talking about the win-win solution. That rather than a raised platform that the reserve was describing as a mono-rail, we're going to go gently down the northern retaining wall and get to a four-foot, no more than, higher than a four-foot elevation as we make our descent down, which will shorten the distance that you're going north, south on the Arroyo. And the other points have to do with things that are typical in any design process when you're working with the affected property owners, screening, fencing, privacy, and those sorts of issues. And they were extensively discussed with our engineer, staff, the reserve, their engineer and lawyers, et cetera. A lot of time has gone into this particular project. I think it's two years, something like 70-some thousand dollars to date, that the city itself has expended, not to mention what the reserve has expended. So this contract takes this to final design by the end of this calendar year. And it, I think it, you know, the thickness of your packet demonstrates the extent and the importance of public participation in all of our trails projects and how seriously we as staff in the city take this. And the fact that we were able to reach a win-win solution with the reserve, I think is a testament to their and our cooperation.
And rather than, I think, to Leroy's point in our conversation earlier, rather than the council having to reconstruct the contract up here and, and enter in the amendments, that as long that as long as we were able to, to enter the five points into the record that has been agreed upon by the city and the, and the community, with, with the commitment that the contract would be modified, that you felt that that would suffice.
Yes.
And Kelly, any, any concerns regarding the modification to the contract to include some of these points?
Mayor, councilors, no, you should offer them as amendments that will be embodied in the contract subsequently.
We'll offer, the clerks being presented by Ms. Ahern, or she has it, the amendments. Okay, any questions, or can ask council then for what the pleasure of the council would be, since I won't make the motion? The pleasure of the council, I don't know that I can make the, I want a motion.
I want a motion.
Okay.
With, 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 I guess the agreement points, the five points.
The five points that have been presented tonight and entered into the record as amended, and Councilor Treehill seconded. Okay, any discussion, roll call.
Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Lindell.
Yes.
Councilor Trujillo.
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Thank you, motion is approved.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to, thank you, matters from the manager, are there any, item 11, any items, Ms. Martinez?
With Mayor, we do not have any items this evening.
And then, Kelly, we're gonna go to you last, if we can, since we're gonna go into executive session, matters from the city clerk.
I have none, thank you.
Matters from the governing board, Councilor Treehill, can we start with you, if you have any?
I have none, Mayor.
Councilor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, I have a, I have a few, I'll try and move through them pretty quickly, one of the issues is, in addition to talking about total project budgets and costs, last Finance Committee meeting, I asked a series of project managers about building permits, and on various city projects, some road projects, some building projects, any number of things, and so, in the rail yard, kind of during one of those conversations, I felt like I really needed clarification, or the city needed clarification, and so, I proposed to meet with Martine Romero, who's the head of the General Construction Bureau. I, in fact, did so this past Monday, our Public Works Director, Nick Chiavo, joined me, thought it was a very good conversation, it clarified a number of things that Nick will pass on to various project managers, as well as, there'll be, you know, Martine, Mr. Romero offered kind of just a group discussion about different issues for our project managers, which Nick felt was a good idea, so, that was one thing, helps clarify. I hope that everybody's had a chance to read the memorandum that came out, or came from Kim Wiley, she is the president of the Nava Aday HOA, and as you remember, there were some real concerns, legitimate concerns, for that group of homeowners about the Fourth of July, and that ended up, and I've reported in the past, that there was a meeting that was held, Ray Sandoval, Seb Gurdeley, Captain Lewandowski, and members from the Nava Aday community, so, the, the understanding is embodied in that memorandum, and so, you'll continue to hear, we hope to have things clarified around the first of the year, make sure everybody knows what's, what's gonna be happening on the Fourth of July. The surveillance towers that we now have in District Four, that's, that's an interesting one, I mean, the whole story, I think many people know, and maybe you've driven by, the corner of Alamosa Drive and Avenida de las Campanas, and I don't know who lived, resided at that house, it was either, quite frankly, the way it's reported, either members of the Vagos Motorcycle Gang, or the Bandidos Motorcycle Gang. All I know is that shots were fired in that neighborhood, it's a block from Kearney Elementary, District Four, lots of kids live in all parts of District Four, and is a real concern to anybody in our town. So, I was aware of these surveillance towers, you can see, you know, you can see one at Franklin Miles Park, right next to the, we have two, Police Department has two, you can see one that's posted and has been for better part of a week, adjacent to the playground at Franklin Miles Park. So, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, that's was, whether it's at that location or in that neighborhood, I was quoted as saying, among other things, that if I had, you know, shots fired, you know, on my block, I'd probably be interested in, in that surveillance, particularly the people who are involved in that incident. What I would like to know, and this is something for the deputy city manager, is to speak with the Police Department, I'd like to have an understanding, is there a protocol associated with the installation of what I call the surveillance towers? And I think that if it hasn't been developed, it should start at Public Safety Committee, and I didn't have a chance to speak to Councilor Rivera about this as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, but, again, I think there needs to be an understanding of how and where, originally, when it was discussed, I know it was for larger gatherings, whether it was ZOBR, or some, some events such as that, but clearly, this was not a large gathering. I appreciate the fact that we got a, we heard City Manager Snyder asked members of the governing body to refrain from contacting staff in the Parks and Recreation Department about particular concerns, whether they're medians or parks, or wherever it may be, I felt that that was a reasonable request, the only thing I asked was to have a schedule delivered, and so, I just wanted to acknowledge that I, in fact, I assume everybody did, received a schedule that showed the, the medians, the 51 medians that are identified in the schedule, and, and the other thing is that, to the greatest extent possible, I think we should, you know, since the, the public and through the media, as well as direct contact with ourselves as members of the governing body, I think that people should know what we're proposing to do for the medians in the schedule. Now, like most schedules, there'll likely be some slippage, but the fact that a schedule is there and is posted, and we're gonna work it hard, I think is an important statement, and I think people should know. Let's see, I think that's about it, I think that's about it for me, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Lindell.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, there are a couple items that are introducing, one, a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the street projects, also a resolution stating the official intent of the City of Santa Fe, New Mexico, to reimburse itself from proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued in the future for certain capital expenditures relating to construction of street improvement projects. And then, also, Renee and Matt O'Reilly, you could be helpful on this, because I know Alexandra Ladd is not here, but one of the challenges that we have in allocating housing funds relates to the annual allocation that occurs, as opposed to twice-a-year allocation, so I think we allocate, or look at allocate funds for affordable housing during the spring time period, when that happens, we miss out on the opportunity to be able to support affordable housing rental projects that need to know whether there'll be public support in the fall, so that they can apply for tax credits, and I wanted to ask Alexandra if she could begin to look at our existing housing policies that would allow for a twice-a-year allocation, so that affordable housing developers would be able to represent any public participation in the pursuit of tax credits, and also to look and identify whether impact fees, from a lawful standpoint, could be appropriated by the governing body to lower costs that ultimately would lower rental rates, and so, if Alexandra could work on those, those issues and offer, if they can happen, maybe some type of communication to the governing body, if they can, you know, to lay out the process where we can begin to consider those changes in a timely manner, so that we can, I think it's one effort that could help enable more rental, affordable rental housing to go up into the marketplace if we're able to change some of those rules.
Mayor, I'm happy to pass that on to Alex and help her with that.
Appreciate it, and then, the only other thing is, Friday is the, the annual Tuskegee Pueblo Revolt Run that will be taking place into the, into the plaza, I believe they're expecting the runners to come in at nine o'clock, or somewhere around there, so if the council can be present, that would be very helpful. All right, moving on to Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of things real quick, just to remind everyone that school will be starting, and so, if they could remember to keep an eye out for, for our kiddos out there, walking to and from school, and speaking of back-to-school and kind of our parks issue, one of the things that we've done in the past is to make sure that city, city rights of ways around our parks are clear of obstructions, so that our young children can walk through our sidewalks and that sort of thing, so, I know that they're working on lots of things these days, but I think that that might be one of those priorities, at least now that school is starting. And then, Kelly, just, if I can ask you to start a bill with Jesse and Alexandra, regarding affordable housing and homeowners associations, I don't necessarily, it's not really relevant to what you were talking about, but this has to do with whether or not some of our affordable home buyers are required to pay the really expensive association dues that are out there, so if you could just get with her on that and get a bill started for me on that, I would appreciate it.
Councilor Dominguez, we have met on that and are looking for solutions that other communities might be using that would work, as you know, it raises a number of issues, but we think we can find a way, and we already have discussed some legislation that may have been started, maybe five or six years ago, that was dropped, yeah.
Okay, so I'd, I'd like to see that and just work on it for me, that's all, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing other than just the point you made about the possibility of looking at those credits, that we're gonna have that discussion in the Community Development Commission, because it, it did come up in one meeting, and I think we just need to talk about options and possible recommendations.
Yeah, it requires some type of ordinance change.
Right, right.
It's governed by...
If so, then I will work on it as well, since I am Chair of that committee.
Yeah, if you can bring that forward, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Councilor Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first, I would join in each as, as a cosponsor of each of the matters that you have introduced, I would also ask that they come to Public Works, seeing as how they involve street projects, and that meeting would be on September 11th, so it wouldn't impact the timing of those moving forward, but I think that would be appropriate in the instance, and the one other item I have is introducing a resolution on behalf of myself, Councilor Harris, and Councilor Maestas, repealing Resolution 2002-40 that adopted the Airport Master Plan and adopting a new airport master plan, which I understand we will have presented at the Public Works meeting also on September 11th, and that is all I have, thank you.
Okay.
There's one other thing.
Councilor Dominguez.
I had a brief conversation with Nick about the RTD report, and so, just so that the city manager's office knows, I may want, I may ask that that come to Finance before it goes to the full governing body, I don't wanna obstruct it in any way, but I wanna make sure that it gets vetted properly, so, just before you get to that Finance Committee agenda, let me, you know, consider those things as well, thank you, Mayor.
All right, okay, moving on, back on to item 12, matters from the city attorney, Councilor Ives, do you want to offer the motion?
Yes, please, I move that the governing body go into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda in accordance with the recommendation of the city attorney.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, before we do the roll call, Kelly, any concern over getting back here at seven o'clock?
No, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, Councilor Lindell.
Yes.
Councilor Trujillo.
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Ives.
Yes.
And Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes, and we are adjourned until 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Sorry.
Can you get out of there?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, no, if it was not, the consent is considered to be approved, if they don't program, they just move to approve the consent, as amended, and I think they would go to the... You know, I don't, you'll have to talk to, and who, and who would know?
Well, I was, Art Commission.
You'll think, what you'll need to do is to contact, let's see, I would think we need to contact the director of management.
We were told that they had to...
Well, was that in, was that in here?
It's the same, no, we applied for grant.
But this item, was it in there, was it in there?
Art Commission.
I don't, I don't know what was attached to this deal.
There was just, it, just a minute.
Hey, there.
How are you?
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, yeah.
Let's see, if it's, if it's attached here, no, ten, at ten.
We don't know for M or N.
Wait, are you looking for M or N?
Well, we're not sure which one we're on, it could be either one.
Here isn't M or S, Finance Committee, not just that, we recognize.
That's all?
That's all, that's always in this one, and, yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah, well, it, yeah, well, what happens is they have bills, and they put them on what they call a consent calendar, and then, at the first of the meeting, they ask any councillors if they wanna pull any of those.
Okay.
If it is not pulled, it is approved.
Gotcha, okay.
So, whatever is in here, and, well, yeah, and I'm, I'm not, you probably need to speak to somebody in the finance department, let's say here. Whatever they were, it's approved, and, and if nobody pulled it, and I don't see amendment, so...
Tell me, did it prove?
I was presumed, yes, yes, Jackie, Jackie Campbell, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll hold on to this, that's Jackie Campbell?
Yeah, that's who you would call.
Thank you very much.
But it was approved.
Thank you so much. Okay. We assume, what is coming?
Well, it's hard to understand a consent calendar, and also, that they approved whatever's in the packet, you know.
Okay, and what I would not prove would be discussed here, or they would not have given their consent.
Right, we only had two items pulled for discussion, and that was I and Jackie, and then, they approved those, too.
Right.
But they wanted to discuss some more.
I see how it works. Right, I understand, okay. So, they go through all of that before the meeting?
That's right, it's been through all kinds of...
They know what they're gonna pull, something to discuss.
It has to go through the committee process, and it has to be approved by two policy committees, in, in order for it to be approved.
Okay.
And then, for it to be, go on to council, and they put it on the consent, and if they don't pull it, we bother to do... And if they don't pull it for other discussions, it's approved when they move on.
Makes perfect sense now. Yeah, we just didn't, we, we were told, you know, yeah, go to the city council, they'll, they'll discuss, you know, that they'll discuss it.
Well, they could just well have called it and for discussion.
If they, if somebody had decided.
But just I and Jay were the only ones.
Okay, thank you so much for training.
No problem. Hi. No. No, it's approved. Yeah, uh, but that's just, uh, to, that's just approval to, to have a public hearing.
Yeah, to bring it to the public.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, and, and normally they don't remove a request to publish because they're gonna hear it on the thirteenth. That's when they'll consider the bill.
Oh, so this is.
No, it says request to publish notice, a public hearing on September the thirteenth. That's what was approved for this bill. It was not approved. It will be considered for approval on September thirteenth.
So it'll go be postponed to the council on September thirteenth?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, they just, uh, so if they can post notice, they'll be approved here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I mean, I'd say just, well, yeah, yeah, that it's, uh, so you say you have, they'll come out and accept these sessions and then, uh, the best conditions. Oh, it's common to, uh, uh, do that. And then you have, uh, and more, I don't know, three items to listen to, Jim. I doubt my family would ever listen again, and one is, and they are all, I have these.
Do you have work to catch up on, or can I interrupt you?
No, what, well, um, one of the sisters and I were having a conversation about what we're trying to do inside. And, um, one of the questions that came up for me was, do we know yet which algorithm, no, no, software is going to.
They will not be able to actually.
Oh, I know that, I know that, but.
But, but they're going, they're going, that, those are all the things. And you're talking about when a boat is cast, having the machine to behave and sort those boats. No, they have none. They have only the six, uh, to do the first three, if it would be all of them. The machines are all the machines that we have after we have this one. We had a long conversation. I understand the ones that we have, but we don't know what's going to be expanded to. I'd add a quarter, half, a fifty, you know, that's.
For what?
Yeah, for one office.
Well, but then there's a question about how does the history runoff part work? How many times do they pass through in order to solve? See, no, there's all kinds of questions.
My understanding that it goes until somebody gets to fifty-one percent.
But do they work from bottom up? Do they work from the size of?
They start with number one.
Oh, they work from?
If, if number one, they do, they count them all in number one. And then they move all those votes to number two, and then they count all the votes in number two and add them to these, until somebody gets to thirty-one percent. And the machine supposedly set up to, to do that.
Supposedly set up to do.
So it's up to the, it's up to the carryover, you know, doing the machines to set them up that way and testing them.
Yes, and, uh, they, uh, the council will not test the machines for the city election.
We have to do tests.
A six or seven test. She'll go in and she'll test every machine that we're doing.
Well, you know that I haven't run a presiding gender work because my wife is on this, I could do that.
Sure.
So what if you, what kind of wrong do you have? Well, I have, I have, uh, degenerative dyskinesia. So, like, and I have scoliosis and my, you know, and all that. And it just finally, it finally gets to the point where I have my life just.
I had, I went to my back doctor and I had, they had, like, uh, two, they had a last room. And I had gone to the, with my own, my own attorney, attorney, was a horrible back. And I had told him that.
Oh, that's really unfortunate.
Well, well, and I, yeah, and I, and she didn't have that surgery.
Yeah.
And she said, I said, I am, yeah, I'm very little, the guy is just constant pain.
Yeah.
And, and my quality of life has gone down. And, and they sent me, I told, I told my back doctor, she sent me to the board.
Yeah.
And told me to talk to the doctor about regular visits of your patients. And that's where they go with, they go in on each side of your back and use most frequency sound. And it worked for me, uh, in two thousand and seven, the quality. I couldn't, I think I could stand in a crime span. Whenever I went to go to a store, I couldn't find a partner, I suppose, and just didn't go in. And it has meant everything.
But you've never had, you've never had a reaching years where your lungs were.
Are you having, I, I lived with, uh.
Not sighing.
I had sigh at the.
No, this is like.
I know, I, you know, scared. And it wasn't, but it, but that should handle it, I don't know. I have this general disease, I have a general, right, I, just go, yeah. Or was Sandoz, things, whatever, yeah, same thing. And, and it was.
Wow, and did you get it through the same?
Yes. Uh, Doctor, uh, twenty twenty. For a while they stopped doing this, you know, because you probably have to have it done again someday. But what the hell, and she moved Albuquerque and now she's back in San Fe and she is doing the radio. But they have to go and have a test to figure.
Right, this is not for me. I, I've had, I have a pretty recent MRI and the record was like seventeen days long. You know, and I couldn't even read it, it was so depressing.
Well, I, I quit reading, I'm halfway through and, you know.
It's like every disc is like.
I know.
Corner, every side, everything.
Of my, my, instead of, you know, her knees.
Right.
They go in and, and they, and press on the slide.
Yeah, right.
But it, it, it's something with nerves that just.
Well, if you think of her name, I appreciate it. Uh, Doctor.
The name of her design. Yeah.
Do you remember me?
Sir?
Do you remember me?
Yes, I do.
The big mouth on, on Public Safety years ago?
I remember you. I couldn't remember your name, but, yes, I remembered your face.
The one that yelled at Chief Rayo?
Everybody yelled at Chief Rayo.
I was known to open my mouth at, at, uh, Public Safety.
Yes, I remember, yeah, I did Public Safety for years. That was, was it when Peso was the chair or when?
That, no, the chairs at the time were Ron. That's when Ron was chairman of Public Safety under Mayor Coss.
Right, Ron Drew.
It was Ron, it was Ron and Rivera.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh, well, uh, God, it's on the tip of my tongue. It's a designer. She, it's a famous designer of women's clothes.
Coco Chanel.
No, it seems like it starts with an A.
Fashion, fashionist, that we are, right. Right, right. Shop there all the time, right. Okay, well, if you think about it.
Mostly we have, uh, what if, that wasn't, uh, I'll, I'll.
Think about it, yeah.
I'll put it here, my folks, I'll get you the name. She's just so good.
Right, 'cause, um, 'cause surgery really isn't an option.
No, they told me it wasn't.
And, uh, even if Medicare would pay for it, you know, it's still not an option.
As far as I'm concerned, it wasn't an option. But they told me there was no known surgery that would help.
Right.
And that it would just be, and see that painful and it wasn't gonna help it, right.
Right.
And so, uh, which is depressing, uh, to think you got something, you know, you were stuck in this thing. And that's what bothers me about these, all of these damn people that, uh, want to, the resident, uh, Bob and Opie. You've got to have pain medicine. There is no way that you can live without it. And I always lived with a little bit of pain because I don't wanna be a zombie.
Right.
And, uh, I, you know, I, I take oxycodone, but I take, and it's true, oxycodone, I can't tolerate it though. It's a little tiny pill and I take like a half about every six hours, you know.
Yeah.
And I've never.
Well, I'm still, I'm still picking a play on that, you know, what's it, but I can see that there's gonna be a time and that's not gonna work.
There will be. You can't, you can't, I remember that once that I woke up and I couldn't even sit on the side of the bed. And my husband was home, I finally took enough, uh, uh, I looked around for pain, because I didn't take touch pain medicine and found something and I was able to get my step into the emergency room. And, uh, and then I went to see my pain doctor. And, uh, it was six weeks or more, but I had to stand up to eat.
Yeah.
I, I could not do anything other than that.
Yeah.
And the pain was so excruciating. Well, I didn't, I couldn't live without pain medicine. And, uh, and I'm very cheerful with it, absolutely, and, and, uh, I, I.
Which is worse, have the pain and have the pain.
Yeah, but I am, over the years, and it's been since two thousand and seven, so. And I'm saying, yeah, I have not been close to those.
Oh, that's cool, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I just, I don't want to take so much anymore, I just want the best.
Right, right. I, I'd mostly take aspirin, like, just so that I relax enough that my body relaxes enough that, that I can really.
Have they ever renewed any of the, uh, exercises you did?
Oh, tons of exercises, they don't do any good.
They helped me in seventh grade, but my, I was in therapy, I must have been in therapy forever.
Yeah.
And I just, I finally gave up. I had reached a goal, I said, I can't stand this.
Yeah, they tell me, they tell me no more swimming, which really killed me, because that was my main exercise. I'm afraid to walk now because I get a quarter mile to go home and I fall over, everything to do, you know, it's, it's really bad, but.
That's when I started walking with the cane because you never know what that's gonna happen. You never know when that's.
Oh, it's a bummer that you're.
But it was certain, you were, yes. And they said, that's amazing that it would last that long, but I could feel it starting to work and I probably need to get it done again.
Yeah, I used to go to acupuncture, yours.
That helped a tiny bit.
The acupuncture itself didn't help, it just, he used to use a tense thing on my back to activate.
I uh.
Stuff, and that was effective then, but now, when I try to do it, I'm just.
Do you have a dance machine?
I have one, but it's just not enough.
No.
I hate to like wear it all the time, right.
Nothing, and wow, nothing worked, and I just, I I thought, you know, I I can't stand this anymore, I have. I I I don't have any power to draw it now. And uh, yeah, I know, it was just, wasn't that it was excruciating pain all the time? But it was just that it never went away, it was always there, sometimes it felt worse, you know?
Like today, I drove back to Albuquerque in an hour in the car. Then I, I did some walking around, which was good, but the acupuncture was moving towards something, sitting on a bike for three hours. Then an hour driving back here, now sitting in a car.
Well, I know.
These seats are gorgeous.
Oh, they're, they're horrible. And I know that.
I asked Mike, I said, find out how much it would cost to do, get new chairs for this place, I'll write you a check. He said, you can't do that.
But you know, they bought new chairs for the council and I had a chair that I was sending him, it had a spring.
Yeah.
That was out of it and.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And by the time that the making was over, it was in. And you can't drive it.
The best, the best one is the one that Renee has, those chairs are great, you buy all of those.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nine hundred bucks.
Yeah, but you know what, what costs me, I mean. You know, if you're gonna have to sit, you gotta have something.
To support yourself.
And I said something to Robert Romero, he was gonna sit me in Japan, and I said, those are wonderful chairs, and I said, yeah. And I said, it's too bad that I don't have that chair. And he felt that spring in that chair and the next time I came, they had one of these chairs.
Well, good for you, good for you for sitting up, yeah.
You know, they were just so good.
Yeah, right, well, you know, there, how many other people have to sit in that chair, I mean, yeah, you know, right, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and but, but you don't, you know, you're the stenographer, you don't really, but I just had that night when they were, the second round of their chairs and I said.
Where's Mike?
Yeah, and and so I got one. Hey. What are you doing?
I'm just. Checking stuff down. I'm gonna stick around, just public comment.
You have better than that.
Can you please tell me what you just said?
No.
Why do you even want to say that beard, man, you got the Jesus look coming on, like, how you been, bro?
There's no sign of cheating.
I don't work for the city, sorry.
Hi.
Where do we sign?
Speak when? Uh, uh, for petitions from afar or for petition writing? Would you just stand up and they'll ha- ask you to line up? No problem, and that'd be the first thing after they come back in, go back in session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I have some questions. If I can answer them, please. Oh, we found it. Another batch of. Yeah, right, so. Oh. No, it's mine. Yeah. So. Yeah. So, I agree. It's mostly. Anyway, so, like. So, this is what the toilet. This is something else. Yeah. You still feel the same. But. It's not. I love this. It's just trying to keep. You know, I mean, I read it. So, I agree. I'm one of the girls. It's mostly. Anyway, so, like. So, this is what the toilet. This is something else. Yeah. Anyway, so, like. So, this is what the toilet. This is something else. Yeah. You still feel the same. Yeah. Did you? Yeah. I have down. I have my. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, so, like. So, this is what the toilet. This is something else. Yeah. You still feel the same. Yeah. Did you? Yeah. No. I have down. I have my. Yeah. Yeah. Pass it. Yeah. 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 Pass it. Yeah. 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 Interesting. But. It's still twenty-nine. Two weeks, three weeks. Do we still have my ways? And. Yeah. 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 Right, um, I mean, you know. Well. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think that. Yeah. Just. Just take. Yeah. Right, um, I mean, you know. Well. Yeah. Had to achieve. Um, but I really got to get. Yeah. She. She. Yeah. And then. Just. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. I'm saying. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. I'm saying. Yeah. Did you see? Yeah. 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 And it's. And you do it. And you do it. You know, it's. I'm saying. Yeah. 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 So. Now. Always. To get. Really. Oh, yeah. 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 And then. And then back here. What happened? He has retained. The water that come around. But. Right. But. So. I'm dropping. Down. Like. Now. Yes.
I have a question. I have a question. Can I say it right here so everybody can hear me? Yolanda, is it true? Sorry, I didn't make it last there. What? Hey, you should hear the way she talks to me in her office and don't get fooled by this.
Uh-oh, they've come back. Yolanda, I'm. This reporter on. Yeah. 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 Oh. There'll be quarters on.
Can you, um? Come on down, Dave. Come on down. Yeah, pull it over this way. Just so he can get his chair through there. Good evening, everybody. We're going to come back into session as soon as we get our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to do.
All right, yeah, let's go ahead and do that and then we can, uh, we can move on to the.
I move that the governing body come out of executive session stating for the record that the discussion in executive session was limited to the matters noted on the agenda.
Roll call.
Yes, Councilor Trujillo.
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez. Councilor Harris. Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Lindell. And Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved.
Okay, we're going to move into the evening session. Uh, Matt, can you hear me in the back? Is this on? All right, we're going to move into the evening session and we're going to take petitions from the floor. Uh, anyone is welcome to address the council regarding any matter that is not listed, uh, on the agenda. Dave, come on up.
I'm Q2997, Gias Raza. Tonight, get off easy. I'm not going to make any negative remarks or anything else. All in my say. Thank you. And if any negative stuff I was going to say, read the paper. It's full of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good job, Dave.
Okay, if we just hold on till Dave's able to exit the ramp and then we'll allow people to come forward. All right, uh, two minutes for, um, being able to address the council, please. Good evening.
Mary Schreben, uh, I just wanted to amplify the things you were talking about in the earlier session, I hope this is okay, uh, about the watering of trees. I was at the Urban Forest Council meeting this afternoon and the consensus among the group was the number one issue for dying trees in climate change times is watering. And I know that, um, the parks is challenged to get water all the time to the right trees. And I know that the schedule is going to need to be looked at carefully because winter watering, as long as the temperature is above a certain degree, is going to be critical. Then we skip the late winter freeze so that we don't, we can avoid the butt-out problem. And, uh, but then consistent watering of every tree is going to be really, really required if we're going to keep our trees because the dieback across the state is approaching fifty percent and that's something that we're not going to be able to do. And you also have to think that when you're putting in a two-inch sampling, it already represents about eight years of work from somebody to get something from seed to two-inch whip state sampling. So that's already an investment by the grower, the nurseryman, whoever, to get that tree that far along. And if we put in one out, one year or two years of watering, that's an expensive, uh, planting operation, soil remediation, mulching and watering operation and then to just squander that by cutting off water after that is a problem. So in all of the public works that we do all over the city, we really need to think seriously about how we're going to be sustainable about the tree watering. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Hold on, uh, I think Stephanie, were you, Stephanie, did you, you were, okay, all right. Go ahead, guys. Come on up and state your name for the record. Uh, be allotted two minutes. When you hear the bell, if you could please be courteous of other speakers and wind down your presentation.
Uh, good evening. My name is A.J. Goldman and I am a community of Santa Fe. We spent the last two hours outside rallying against the anti-racism statement. Uh, we are shoulder to shoulder and this is to Santa Fe Power. We as members of a diverse community in Santa Fe are concerned by the recent rise in racist rhetoric in local, public discourse. Santa Fe is unique in the world for our community of multi-ethnic interconnectedness. The words and actions of the Santa Fe Power organization are divisive, racist, and do not represent our city nor us as a community, as individuals.
Hi, my name is Quinton Anna Wixwell. I'm a resident of Santa Fe and I'm here representing myself and Spiderflower Collective and Shoulder to Shoulder, which is a coalition forming of organizations opposing hate speech and hate activity in Santa Fe and anti-racism. I'm reading another paragraph from our statement which we've published today. "We feel morally obligated to take a firm stand against hate-mongering in Santa Fe. Divisive, narrow-minded racist rhetoric escalates quickly to violence, hate crimes, and attacks against communities and individuals. Throughout the world, we have seen an upsurge of in-hate-mongering, race-baiting, and xenophobic discourse. This has no place in Santa Fe." Thank you.
My name is Mariah Williams. I'm with Spiderflower and Shoulder to Shoulder. "We will not wait for extremism to lead to a tragedy in our community, and so before that happens, we firmly say no. We say furthermore that no group that plays with hateful rhetoric should be taken seriously in local or national politics." Thank you.
Buenas noches, City Councillors. My name is Lucinda Vial. I am here to give Javier some sweets for his birthday and some peaches.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Delicious. Wow, this is heavy. Thank you. This is great. It's like real peaches and then sweets, so you make them up together.
Encantado estar aquí esta noche. I don't know if Jorge would approve of my Spanish, but, um, I wrote this and I wanted to read it to everyone and, um, let's see, Connie Hernandez would say, "Write it down because Suave is playing too much Elvis." I've heard all of his songs except for "Don't You Step On My Blue Suede Skates," which, by the way, I did hear today at noon. Um, anyway, "The Boys and Girls Club on Alta Street is part of Santa Fe, so don't try and pass the buck, my darling Clementine. There should be a cottonwood tree planted on the corner of Palace Avenue and Washington Street, so a hundred years from today, there will be shade. Nate, Downey, and I cry for shade. I have never seen so many plants in the center of the plaza. Around the obelisk, they need mulch. There are flower beds on the rooftop of the convention center that could be turned into a garden. Soil-tested drip irrigation in the nation. Underground rain catchment systems, garbage disposals that go into your compost, maybe? Uh, bathtub water, Epsom salts that waters your vegetable garden." And, um, so I'm just trying to make Santa Fe a beautiful place and verde. And my original dicho, "Después de la fiesta, que viva la siesta." Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for my peaches and my sweets.
Good evening, Councillors, Mayor. My name is Nathan Ribenfeld and I also wanted to continue reading part of the, uh, statement that we had penned earlier. Um, "We support free speech directed at the goals of open discussion, political policies and goals, but we stand against a language which breeds hate, fear, and could possibly encourage or incite our neighbors to commit hate crimes. We call upon the people of Santa Fe to visibly and vocally embrace inclusion, diversity, and anti-racism. We call upon the people of Santa Fe to take action to ensure that all races are treated with dignity and respect. We call upon Santa Fe to insist upon respect, intersectionality, interconnectedness, and to publicly affirm our shared humanity in the face of race-based hate." Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Dr. Lakind?
Hello, my name is Nicole Green. Um, I'm with Spiderflower Collective also. I just wanted to say a few words. I just wanted to remind everyone listening that we as human beings have a responsibility to love and care for each other in any way that we can and that the, the words of Santa Fe Power speak directly against that and that we, and that racism is something we cannot allow to be tolerated in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Leslie Lakind. I've lived here for over forty years. For almost most of that time, I've been a dentist. I'm retired now and I am not, I don't know who the Spiderflower Collective is yet, but I'm looking forward to meeting them because, uh, all right, because, um, uh, I've lived here for forty years and it's a great place to live. I love living in Santa Fe and one of the reasons I love living here is because, you know, we're such overall a welcoming community where, I mean, color of skin, race, religion, you know, gender, identity, whatever it is, um, pretty much most of the time you can feel really safe here. And I just want to put in my two cents about saying that I hope we can keep it that way and I hope that councillors can, um, be leaders, uh, in leading the, anybody who may feel led astray by racism and hatred to show that you're a good leader and disavow that and lead us to, uh, continue to be a great place to live. Thank you.
My name is Roger Rayel. I'm a concerned citizen of Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Sir, can you please, uh, turn and address the council?
I'm not addressing the council. I'm addressing the people that matter.
Excuse me, sir. Please, if you can.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Sir.
I ask that you listen to me for my two minutes.
If you could please address the council.
What I like to talk about is what's transpired with our city that's divided us even more than what the government has.
Mr. Rayel.
I'm asking you ladies and gentlemen to understand that what was said, there is no excuse for it. There is none.
Mr. Rayel.
It was appalling.
Can you please address the council?
It was even more appalling when they had thought that I had brought that meme to them. I'm an artist. I would not do something like that. That is, that is, that is the worst form of entertainment. I've been discriminated against myself. I've had people tell me, "Shut up because you're fat, you don't know nothing." I've had this own administration here put, put what I feel is racism on me. But does it matter? No, it doesn't. Because, you know why? Because tomorrow we get up to fight another day. And that's what we have to look at now. Where do we put this blame on? Do we put it on one person or do we put it on everybody in the community? Yeah, I put it on myself because, you know what? When I got that meme, I should have told them to shut the hell up because that wasn't right. But you know what? I just said, "No, I'm not putting that up because that's, that's racist." I didn't do that. I didn't do my job as a citizen. All right? But I want to put something to you guys that I found this morning in my hateful heart. My hateful heart, yes, I'm very angry. I found this, it says, "Fear is the path of the dark side. Fear leads to anger. Anger leads to hate. Hate leads to suffering. The brave man is not he who does not feel afraid, but he who conquers that fear. Nothing in life is to be feared." So what? They call you fat, they call you ugly, they call you gawacho, they call you cholo, they call you spic, negro, whatever they call you. So what? You conquer that. And that's what we have to do is we have to conquer that. If you don't conquer that, then that's on you. That's your fault. That's your sensitivity. But at this point, we all share the responsibility in this mishap that happened here in Santa Fe. We all as a community should be ashamed of it and stop pointing fingers at one person and let's look at ourselves.
Thank you, sir.
Stephanie Benanato, um, I'm in, I'm interested in the shoulder-to-shoulder movement as well as what this last speaker said about fear. But speaking out does, um, get you retaliated against. And I have spoken out against the Recreation Department. I've spoken out about Rob Carter not being quite transparent. He has told everybody, and transparent is being kind. He told us when people who have mobility issues protested that there was going to be a picnic area on the west side of the Salvador Perez Building. He said, "Oh, no, 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 don't worry, you know, we're not going to do that," even though it was in the park plan. We now find out that that holding pond that doesn't work, well, the reason it doesn't work apparently is that it's going to be refixed and water all the grass that's going to be where the parking area is now, where people with mobility issues need that area to be able to directly access the main entrance into Salvador Perez, not walking around from the south side or coming in through the pool doors, which are not supposed to be kept open. So I've talked about that. I talked about Liz Royball not, uh, coming forward and being a guard one day when she was right at the pool and we needed a guard and we had to close the pool because she couldn't bother to stay there. I've talked about the holding pond. After I talked about Liz Royball, suddenly what I used to do for years was no longer acceptable. And the other day when I was spinning on my spin bike, okay, at the Chavez Center when somebody didn't show up, here's what I'm wearing. This is a spin shoe made by Shimano, okay? And it's a clip-in. I was on the bike. I was clipped in. I wasn't walking through any area that had weights. This is a spin area. You have a Pilates yoga area, people are in there without shoes. Nobody tells them they can't be in the area without shoes. I had Kevin Chavez come up and tell me I couldn't be there and I had to leave immediately and we already had a conversation about this. We hadn't had a conversation. I've worn these shoes for fifteen years. I don't even get off the spin bike on these shoes. If I have to go use the bathroom in the middle of the class, I put on my street shoes and go down there. And again, when Chavez approaches me, pushes one of the bikes away as if he's going to try to pull me off the bike to get me to go, I started laughing because I'm clipped in. How is he going to be able to pull me off of there?
Thank you.
So, no, I'm not quite done, Your Honor.
No, actually, we are done.
And I appreciate it if you give me an extra minute.
No, actually, no, we've got others that want to speak.
No, I'm sorry, but I'm going to go on because I was told there was a file on me by Liz Royball.
Stephanie, that is enough.
And I'm asking how many people have files on me.
Please stop and abide by the rules that everyone tonight has abided by.
Because it's fascist to be, uh, be made a file on somebody.
That's enough.
Please, you know what? You let union people speak pastime, you let Gloria Mendozas speak pastime.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's about time you let me do it instead of interfering.
It's time that we move on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Jim Williamson. I'm currently running in City Councilor, District Three, in the Tierra Contenta Airport Road area. Wanted to offer some feedback on the tunnel landscaping that's running under St. Francis Road. That project was rubber stamped unfortunately by the Finance Committee at a price tag of $104,000. Now, that's quite a burden to put on our working-class families. Now, myself, I have experience putting in trees, removing trees, trimming trees. Trees can easily be purchased for $150 each. If you don't believe me, go to a local Payne's Nursery. Literally, it's $150. The bid was $800. Why did we do that? We have a great Parks and Recreation crew. They could install those trees, tap into existing city water lines for the irrigation like we're talking about, maintain our investment. We want to keep those trees watered so they're there for generations. We can then go to Buckman for the mulch. It's free. The weed fabric is probably a few thousand dollars. Then we go to a local business such as Montaños off of Airport Road, or I'm sorry, off of Agua Fría, for a few more thousand. Instead of $104,000, I'm ballparking around $30,000. So that's a $70,000 difference. And we can plug that $70,000, put more of these gentlemen on the street, our public safety with that savings. So I just want you guys to understand, if we're physically responsible on one end, that'll give us savings to put more public safety. Y también estoy de acuerdo en lo que dicen estos. Hay que bajar el racismo, mi ben así gavacho pero hablo español. Hay que mantener la cultura como está, no cambiarla. Y si los, y si nos enfocamos a los servicios básicos con inteligencia, no pagando demasiado, se sigue aumentando el coste de vivir aquí en Santa Fe. Y las familias lo paga y se van a Río Rancho.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Visite ajimwilliamsonD3.com.
Thank you, sir.
Van a ver el sentido común. Gracias.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council tonight regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda? Okay, this part of the public hearing has closed. Moving on to item G, appointments, onto the Veterans Advisory Committee. I'd like to submit the names of Kenny Kealan, James Allen Hayes, and Dorothy Seaton for appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Moving on to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, we'd like to submit the appointment of Helen Brooks from the healthcare industry to fill the unexpired term ending 6 of 2019. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we're going to move on to the public hearings. And one other point, councilors, we did issue a press release today asking for members of the community to submit names if they're interested in serving in the, on the planning commission. There are several appointments that are in place, so want to make sure you're aware of it if you have members in the community that would be interested. We're going to move on to item H, the public hearings. This is request, item number one is a request from the New Mexico Heart Cider for a wine grower's second off-site local license for both on-premise and off-premise consumption to be located at Desert Dogs Brewery and Cider at 112 West San Francisco Street. Is the applicant present? All right. Congratulations. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council regarding this item? Seeing none, the public hearing has closed. What's the pleasure of the council?
Just a couple of questions.
The applicant could please come down.
Hi, Mr. Moya, correct? Good to see you. This is exciting, this relocation. And I was just unclear about the map. I was just, I was looking at it and I'm assuming it's the old Sleeping Dog Tavern location? No?
Oh, it's a third floor, so it's...
Third floor.
Old Santa Fe School.
Mr. Moya, can you quickly say your name for the record and we just, I knew you were sworn in.
Is it on?
Hold on, we got to put your mic on. Okay.
Craig Moya.
Thank you.
So it's the third floor where the old Santa Fe Culinary Institute was.
Okay. Good to know. And then the hours of operation, I couldn't read on the application.
So it's going to be like 11 to midnight.
11...
11 in the morning to midnight.
Got it. All right. So all I, all I wanted to know was just location because I couldn't define it and just wanted to wish you all good luck.
So there'll be food after 10:00 in the downtown area.
Food after 10:00, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Moya? Seeing none, or Councilor Trujillo?
Are you selling those shirts at your place?
Yes, sir. We have them at the Tap Room at 505.
I'm going to get one of those, I like them.
Thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve.
Row call.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to add for the record that if you would please add the condition of approval because this, the new hasn't yet been built out. So it's to, that they comply with all fire, building, and land use code requirements prior to release of city licenses.
Mr. Moya, do you agree with that?
Yeah, so it should be Friday. It's everything's done.
Great, thank you. All right, row call.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. All right. Moving on to item two is a consideration of bill number 2017-19. It's an adoption of an ordinance, number 2017...
16.
16, an ordinance repealing the section 25-11 relating to the Water Conservation Credit Program. This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to address the council regarding this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Two minutes, Yolanda.
Stephanie Benanato. I think it would really be helpful when you have public hearings if you will let the applicant or the person who's sponsoring or presenting the ordinance, that they would actually give some basic information about it so that even if you've read it online, you understand what they're really saying, where they're coming from, in case you haven't had an opportunity because making a statement in a vacuum is really unhelpful. And I do hope that the water conservation measures that are being proposed here, because I'm unaware of what they are exactly, will actually be helpful, that we won't see city workers watering in the middle of the day. And I really would suggest that you get rid of those potted flowers because really, we have a lot of beautiful color around in our town. And I don't know how much they cost, but we don't need those flowers that aren't even native to our area that are watered every day. And every day, the water comes dripping out of those pots and every day, the benches on the plaza are wet. And so again, it seems to me an enormous use of resources, both employee time and water that could be conserved and used more productively for the trees that we would like to last for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to address the council regarding this item? Seeing none, the public hearing has closed. Any questions to the council or what's the pleasure? Councilor Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would note, because it's not covered in the material that I can see in our packets, was that this matter did come before the Water Conservation Committee on July 11th with a recommendation forward prior to the council meeting on the 12th. So with that said, I would move to approve.
There a second? Discussion?
Just some discussion is, did go to public utilities?
They certainly have chimed in on it and I think Councilor Yvette is the chair of Public Utilities, right? Okay. Any other questions? Row call.
Yes. Councilor Dominguez? Councilor Harris? Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell? Councilor Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
And Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you, motion is approved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tonight.